We can start it. I'm gonna... All right, before we get started, I'd like to ask Pastor Jacob Elzy from Vision Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation. Well, thank you for being here, too. Appreciate it.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight as your servants. We just ask that you would help us bless our lives and help us bring glory and honor to your name. And so you bless this meeting tonight, that the decisions that they will make would be wise and bring glory to your name, Father, and bring honor and bring peace to the people. God asks that you would just bless every person here tonight, as they do make these decisions, Father, to think carefully upon them, have wisdom in their decisions. God asks that you would help all of them as they go home, drive safely, and the decisions that will be made here make an impact on our community for the better. Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Jacob. Appreciate that. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, August 15th, 2011, to order. The city clerk, please make...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 15th, 2011 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided, however, that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, this concludes your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tark.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, want to welcome everybody here tonight. And certainly, if you guys have not met him, our new Parks and Recreation Director, John. You guys, I'm not sure if the councils met yet or not, but you guys need to take a chance and get to know him. We're excited to have you here. All right, well, the city clerk, please sound the next item.
The next item is approval of meeting agenda. Agenda item number 11-169.
Okay, do we have any other items to be considered? I think you guys and staff has got some.
Yeah, I've got one on an emergency basis. We'd like to add in some agenda ratification and approval of letters from the Director of Community Development, Lynn Tully, dated July 19th, 2011, regarding the City of Milton's Mayor and Council, City Council's decisions made at the April 26th, 2010, regular City of Milton Council meeting regarding denial of U-09-04, 14495 Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004, denial of U-09-03, 880 Mountain Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004, approval of use permit U-09-05, 13302, Providence Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004.
Okay.
Just to advise you, these are letters that are already issued, sent to the courts director in the T-Mobile case. This is simply a request of the council to ratify these as the actual direction of the council with respect to these letters.
Okay. Anything else anybody will address or add? Okay, if not, do I have a motion and second?
May I move to approve the agenda as read into the record by staff?
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Tark, second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, our next item is public comment. First, I want to ask for city clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, is it necessary to read the public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay. Move on to our consent agenda. And the city clerk, please call the items.
First item is approval of the July 11th, 2011 work session minutes, agenda item number 11-170. Next, approval of the July 18th, 2011 regular meeting minutes, agenda item number 11-171. Next, approval of financial statements for the period ending November 2010, agenda item number 11-172. Our fourth item is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and the Tamal Corporation, doing businesses Wildcat Striking and Sealing Company for a guard rail replacement on the Cogburn Road Bridge, agenda item number 11-173. Our next item is approval of an agreement between the City of Milton and On-Site Civil Group, LLC, for the topographic survey for Bell Memorial Park in the amount of $5,400. This is agenda item number 11-174. Our final consent agenda item is approval of a temporary access agreement between Birmingham United Methodist Church and the City of Milton for the 2011 Milton Ronda. This is agenda item number 11-175.
Okay, do I have a motion? Are we gonna add this item under consent agenda as we just stated? Yeah, we need to add that since we put it on the...
The next item is ratification of approval of the letters from the Director of Community Development, Lynn Tully, dated July 19th, 2011, regarding the City of Milton's Mayor and City Council's decisions made at the April 26th, 2010, regular City of Milton Council meeting regarding denial of U-09-04, 14495 Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004, denial of U-09-03, 2880 Mountain Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004, and approval of use permit U-09-05, 13302, Providence Road, Milton, Georgia, 3004.
Thank you, Joe. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda. Is that correct?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, there's no reports and presentations or items under our first presentation tonight, so we're gonna move on to our first public hearing. Will the city clerk, please, sound that item?
An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to fix the ad valorem tax rate of the City of Milton for fiscal year 2011 and for other purposes. Agenda item number 11-163. First presentation was on August 1st, 2011. Stacy English.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I begin the meat of the presentation, I want to have a little disclaimer. Each year, I'm required to publish the current year digest and five-year history, or in our case, you know, whatever history we have, which is four. But when I ran the notice in the paper, I used the preliminary tax digest numbers, and since then, I've received certified information that was, well, information that was certified by the Georgia Department of Revenue. So the numbers are slightly different, so if there's any number geeks out there like me that like to compare what was advertised and what I'm about to talk about, they're slightly different, not much, but just a little bit. The total taxable property value for motor vehicles and real and personal property is approximately $1.9 billion, and that represents a decrease of 4.62% over the 2010 digest. When you multiply that by the proposed mileage rate of 4.731 mils, which you will approve, hopefully, later on in the agenda, the total taxes to be levied will be roughly $9 million. That breaks down to $8.3 million for real property, $189,000 for personal property, and $495,000 for motor vehicle taxes. The bill date will be September 1st with an October 31st due date. In the fairness of full disclosure, it looks like we might have a budget shortfall in the real property tax digest line. We projected a collection of $7.5 million, which will represent a collection rate of about 90%. We typically have a collection rate of about 87%, so that calculates around, to be around $7.2 million. However, we've more than made up for that in the prior year tax collection line item. We collect delinquent taxes. We projected a $900,000 revenues in that line item, and we are close, or already close to, $1.4 million there. So we're the makeup for the shortfall that we project to have in the current year digest line. So I just wanted to let you know that there will probably be a budget amendment coming forth at the end of this fiscal year to account for that. But that's pretty much all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Karen?
Is the shortfall deficit in the current strictly a timing thing?
No, actually, we're right on time with everything. It's more or less just that the property value is decreasing more than what we anticipated them to be.
For?
2011.
So Stacy, the collection rate of 87%?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a trend that we've been noticing? It's just been going down from what we anticipated or what we experienced the last three years, four years?
The assessment rate has gone down. The collection rate will probably be about the same, but if we stick with the $7.5 million in projection, projected revenues, we would have to collect 90% of the taxes. And...
And we're seeing about 87% is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that the way we make that up? I know that you've been real, I don't want to say aggressive, but very actively advertising properties that have taxes owed, and we've been doing something about that. Is that part of the makeup, the line item that's gonna make this up?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. And we have a revenue clerk that is very involved, and she really carries the whole thing through for us, the delinquent tax collections, and her name's Honor Moats, and she's, she is phenomenal. And so because of her efforts and the efforts of our partnership with Delinquent Tax Solutions Incorporated, we've been able to collect over 99% of our delinquent taxes for each year.
So I guess the 87% is what you expect to collect this year, but you expected to collect eventually 99% of it?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, any other question?
I think that might have been what you were referring to.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Okay.
Yes.
You know, we have up to 60 days after the closing of the fiscal year to be able to vote back to the closing fiscal year, and then it shows in the next fiscal year prior year to property tax collected. So you're right that we, it's time as to when it actually hits the votes.
When do we actually expect the bills to go out?
September 1st. It may actually go out a little bit before that, but we'll have a due day, or bill date of September 1st. We already have the tax digest from the Fulton County, and it has already been loaded into our system. We have loaded in all of the exemptions. Right now, we're calculating everything, and we're about to send it to the printers for them to do their magic.
Good deal. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna close the hearing, and if there's any more discussion. If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we don't need the motion.
Right. Okay. And we'll move into this zoning agenda, and will the city court please read the rules and sound this first item?
At the second regular scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the posted agenda. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The planning commission heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations were forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the staff of the Department of Community Development to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application. It shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item is RC 1114 VC 1103, 14375 Providence Road by Seagulls and Snidow LLC, from C1 Community Business and AG1 Agricultural to C1 Community Business and AG1 Agricultural for an existing building for a total of 3,085 square feet and a three-part concurrent variance to reduce the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the west, north, and east property lines to zero feet, zero feet and 20 feet respectively, Section 64-11413A. This is agenda item number 11164. First presentation was on August 1st, 2011. Mr. Tom Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight was reviewed by the planning commission on July 26th, 2011. At that time, they conducted extensive deliberations regarding the request. The following primary issues were discussed. Primary among them were buffering and retention along the west property line adjacent to Pleasant Hollow Farms subdivision. The adjacent property owners within Pleasant Hollow Farms subdivision were concerned about additional noise and light from additional parking in the rear of the existing building. They were also concerned about what types of uses might be on that property in the future and how they might be controlled there. The planning commission did recommend approval of RC 11-14 and approval of concurrent variance 11-03, parts 1 through 3, and they also have provided you a set of alternate conditions which we will go through in just a moment. The proposal before you will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent nearby properties. The proposal will not adversely affect existing use or usability of the adjacent properties if the recommended conditions are approved to provide buffers to the adjacent properties to the west and to the north. The subject site may have a reasonable use as currently zoned C1. Staff does not anticipate any significant impact on existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools as proposed. The proposed development is consistent with the following plan policy developed with the recommended conditions, to encourage the preservation of natural resources areas and preserve contiguous green open spaces. Although the proposed zoning for C1 Community Business is inconsistent with the future land use map, the commercial zoning in associated building was approved by Fulton County Ward Commissioners in 1962, and the zoning exists on that property today. The proposed use will not environmentally, would not be environmentally adverse to the natural resources environment or the citizens of Milton. In conclusion, although the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the future land use plans recommendation of agricultural, it is staff's opinion that by rezoning the property to C1 and AG1, this corrects the non-conforming structure and use on the property and provides buffering to the site from the adjacent properties. Therefore, staff recommends approval condition on RC 11-14 to rezone from C1 Community Business and AG1 Agricultural to C1 Community Business and AG1 Agricultural to allow the existing storage building for a total of 3,085 square feet, and the AG1 agricultural portion remain undisturbed buffers and plant where sparsely vegetated as depicted on the site plan. It is also staff's recommendation that parts 1 through 3 of concurrent variance 11-03 be approved condition. Now, let's turn our attention to the site plans that you have. We have several projects. The page numbers are in the bottom right-hand corner just above that project number. Let's start with page number 1 of 4. This is the existing zoning conditions that are out there on the ground today. If you will notice the big X in the middle of the page, that is property that you reviewed last month. You've downzoned that from commercial, moved it over where it should have been, and zoned it 19. What we're looking at today is a smaller red rectangle on the left. That property, that size of that rectangle right now is .26 acres. You will see that the one-story brick and metal building is not exactly in that, on that parcel, and therefore, we have a problem. We have a noncompliant building and a noncompliant use operating today outside of its zoned commercial area, C1 area. Now, if we will turn ourselves to the next page, the recommendation before you tonight, what you see there is the smaller rectangular area as exists today. We are recommending that we enlarge that area by a total of .3 acres. That's the darker red that you see around that. That would allow the building to be compliant and on the C1 zoning parcel. It would also include enough area behind that building to provide the required parking. To the left and above that, you will see a brownish area. That area is .49 acres. It is also part of the same parcel of land. We are recommending that we rezone that from agricultural to agricultural so that we can pick up conditions of zoning. And we will condition that parcel to be the buffers that are required to buffer this property from the adjacent residential people. If you'll turn to the next page, you will see those buffers illustrated. The buffers that would normally be on the C1 property, we have moved over to the AG1 property. The reason we did that is to minimize the square footage of commercial in this area, since this is primarily an agricultural area. Now, let's take a look at the list of variances that has to go along with this. There are three variances that go along with this, and they are all along the driveway in the area between the C1 portion and the one-story frame residence to the west of that. There should be a 50-foot variant, a 50-foot buffer along that property line to buffer the C1 use from the residential use. Those buffers are not there now. There's no room for them to be there. They just simply are not there. So that's why we have moved the buffers over to the agricultural property to protect that, those neighbors over there. To the left of that line is the Pleasant Hollow Farms subdivision, and there were people present at the planning commission meeting who were very concerned about the noise that might be generated by the parking lot required for this building that would be behind the building. In our condition of zoning, we have asked that the parking not be built until it's required, until it's needed. The total requirement for this parking is 16 spaces. However, right now, it is just used as a storage for a sign company. There may be one, maybe two cars on that property once or twice a week at most, so it's very low-key. Nevertheless, in the future, that use could change to be something else, and the parking may need to be built. We do require that they preserve, preserve the land or a position for that parking lot, although we're asking that it not be built until it's needed. Are there any questions about that so far?
Well, on the parking requirement, still talking about five spaces per thousand?
It is four spaces per thousand. That is our current standard.
Okay, it's calling for five in the parking requirements section.
I'm sorry, sir. Say that again, please?
And other site plan con... And other site plan considerations, parking requirements, calculations, five spaces per thousand.
Robin, did I misspeak?
No, I believe that the adoption of the reduction was done after the submission of this item because this has been held a couple of months to allow them to revise the site plan. So technically, at the time of submission, it was five.
Okay.
Okay, but I guess to clarify, the number of parking spaces shown here, is that based on 5,000 or five per thousand square feet or four per thousand?
One per five, I mean, one, I'm sorry.
One space, five spaces per 1,000.
Five per 1,000, yes. But that was prior, when this was submitted originally, the application, prior to your adoption of the change of the.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Bill?
So we could.
Could.
Reduce it by three spaces.
Right.
Even now, we could reduce it by three spaces.
Which would help that situation.
So the requirement would therefore, under the newly adopted, would be 13 required? And that's 13 required assuming open-ended, relatively open-ended C1? It's not, it's not required based on the current use that's in place?
It's not needed. It may be required, but it's not needed right now, so we would ask that it not be constructed until it is needed.
And then the 13, from that 13, would it be fair to assume that there's also a 10% variance that doesn't require a variance? So another 1.3?
That is absolutely correct. It could be a 10% administrative variance. Of course, that would reduce it by one space, so we're down to maybe 12 spaces.
Which is still obviously significantly more than what's there currently, but just that we have those numbers. Thank you.
Correct, correct. If you'll notice in the conditions of zoning in your package, Condition 1A, we have restricted the uses by everything that we felt was inappropriate for that area. If you look at that as a lengthy list, I believe the applicant agrees that these uses Also, beyond the recommended conditions that are recommended by staff, there is attached an alternate set of conditions that were provided to you by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has included a condition that says, "In the event the current use of the property is changed, the city would be given the opportunity to, to consider additional conditions as a, as a use changed." That's a little complicated and, and from my perspective, because there's no mechanism that would bring that back to you. The zoning case would be closed, your action would be done. There is really no action that would bring that back to you. So I don't really recommend that. I recommend essentially the same conditions, but the ones that are labeled as recommended When I asked the Planning Commission why they took that route, because it is essentially the same thing as, as zoning the property to its current use. In other words, if it was zoned to its current use, any change would bring it back as a rezoning. And Planning Commission said to me that they wanted to send the, the message that they were okay with different uses, but wanted to see the parking requirement for each one to use that might occur in the future. So it got a little complicated right there, but my recommendation is to use the recommended condition and not the alternate conditions.
Okay. Julie, any question?
Yes, sir. Just to confirm, when you talked, Tom, about the mechanism, I guess that the mechanism that would exist would be if it was zoned for the current use, the mechanism would be that that would require then it to come back for rezoning?
Yeah, it would.
I mean, so there are mechanisms in place.
So that would be a change of use and that would require a rezoning.
So that would be the way to handle that if, if that were to be contemplated?
Yes, sir. One way to handle that if you contemplate that.
I guess that's what you're, you're not recommending that.
Uh, I'm not recommending that.
Well, you, let me just clarify. What I heard you say that you were not recommending was the inclusion of this particular language, not necessarily consideration of zoning for current use. You could rezone it and.
Well, to be clear, why I'm recommending is I'm not recommending that language from the Planning Commission that required it to come back. But I am recommending a list of retail uses that are illustrated in, or all, all retail uses that are not excluded in Condition 1A. That is my recommendation, not to, not to rezonate to its current use, but all retail uses that are not exempted in Condition 1A.
Okay.
It looks like may, one of the major issues is the parking, the fact that a bunch of trees would have to be taken out to put that parking in. Is there a way to restrict it to uses that only allow for a certain number or require a certain amount of parking?
Well, all the uses require the same amount of park, require the same amount of parking. All uses may not need the same amount of parking. And if I understand what you're asking is, could you somehow set the number of parking and then let the uses that can function well with that minimal amount of parking? Yes, I do believe you can do that. I do not know that you can do that tonight because if you reduce the parking to something less than that is, that is required in the zoning ordinance, that is essentially a variance. And we have not advertised for a variance. So our citizens would need to have that advertisement in advance so that they could come and speak to that variance, I believe. Is that what you see there? Mr. Attorney?
And I have one other question. The Planning Commission is recommending a berm and looking at the topographical map, I'm not sure where you would put a berm that would do any good because it looks like that the, the structure itself is kind of at the high point, so I'm not sure what a berm would do. What are your thoughts on that?
Uh, I did not think a berm would be effective because what we're trying to block between the residents that is down there on the west side of the property and the parking lot, which is up high, about 10 or 12 feet higher, and there's nothing between the property and the parking lot except the buffer. If you plant along the top edge of that buffer or the eastern side of that buffer, you're going to get far more height on your plant materials than you would on a berm. And remember, a berm is six times as wide at the base as it is at, as it is high.
So you might actually have to take out trees in order to put a berm in?
You would have to take out practically every tree in there, which some of them, some of them are small, but some of them are quite nice. And I just don't believe you would get the bang for your buck by building a berm.
And just to, to Councilman Thurman's point with the trees, I believe that's why your recommendation is obviously not have them, put this parking in until it was needed in the future. And also just to clarify, any of those trees that come out, they'll have to recompense on site.
They would have to recompense any of those trees that, that would come out. In fact, I have a list of that. And I'm only guessing at the size of the parking lot and what kind of slopes it might need to be to keep that thing held up there, but there would be as many as, or could be as many as 32 recompense trees, I believe was the number. I'm sorry, yes, 32 two-inch caliper recompense trees if that larger parking lot was built. Now maybe small, slightly smaller, I believe that, that.
Reduction.
That's ready to use for 4,000, but still that's a significant amount of recompense trees.
But they're two-inch caliper, right?
But they are two-inch caliper, that's for tree organs.
I know Bill had his mental dilemma, but did you still have a question, Bill?
Hi, yes. Counsel submitted this letter. Is this part of the recommended conditions? Does this coincide with your recommended conditions?
The letter that you're holding from Rollator, Rollator, which I understand is an agreement between the property owners to the west there and Mr. Seeger, it's not being reflected in the conditions of zoning. This is something new that's come in, and so I believe the intent is, although I'd be glad this to Rollator speak to this, I believe the intent is that this would be in addition to the recommended conditions. In other words, not only would we have the buffer recompensed, of course, sparsely vegetated, there would all, also be this check at the time that the parking lot was built. And you would have to satisfy this with those neighbors. This is not a condition of zoning that is currently written as a condition of zoning, so therefore I am not the enforcer of this agreement. We could install it as a condition of zoning and then I will be the enforcer of this agreement. But that's not the way it is written right now. I'm quite happy just having the berm, the buffer planted to buffer standards. That's all my needs. This is in addition to that.
Okay. Alan?
Um, yes, sir. Mr. Wilson, just so I'm clear, so we would, we thought, we would not be able to include as a condition the reduction of parking spaces that would just be done by staff as an administrative variance?
10% reduction is an administrative and is done by staff. If you reduce it further than that, we will need to go back and advertise a variance and then come back and visit you so that you would have the ability to approve that variance.
Right. Okay.
Let, let me, as an incentive to the property owner, obviously, it's some, could he put in, would he have to put the five, five spaces per thousand as it's right now, or would he have, is there any way he could put in less?
Well, he could put in four per thousand plus a 10% reduction.
And the reason I ask, because if he decided to, then it would also benefit him because he wouldn't be recompensing as many trees.
That's true. That's absolutely true.
So I'm just, that's an option. That's a.
I mean, at the time, we issued a land development permit to go that parking lot. That's whatever, whatever parking ratio is in effect at that moment is what we would propose upon him, and that would be most likely four unless perhaps we go less in the future.
Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to confirm, make sure I'm clear, we would need to propose, the potential would be a deferral to then add a variance if we wanted to consider something other than simply an administrative reduction of parking. So if there was going to be a consideration, it would be a deferral to then add that variance to further reduce the parking, as I understand it?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Or he could ask for a variance at which time the use changed and he would need to put in the additional parking.
He could at that time ask for a variance to reduce it beyond, lower than the four per thousand and the 10% variance. He could ask for a variance at that time.
And that would allow him to not have to recompense.
And that could.
It would be the financial incentive for him to.
And build fewer spaces and smaller parking lots.
Okay. This time, I'll open up the floor to those speaking in support of this application.
Our first public comment comes from Don Rollator.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Don Rollator, 11-660 Alfreda Highway, Suite 630, Roswell, Georgia. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Seeger's and Snidow. Mr. David Burry of David Burry Engineers and Surveyors is here with me tonight. I want to see if I can make this brief and keep it simple. Our theme remains the one from Jimmy Buffett's Margaritaville song, "How it got here, we haven't a clue." Evidently, in 1962, the Fulton County Commission and the property owner, Mr. Kesselberry, decided it was a good idea to zone this property and Mr. Seeger's office, C1, unconditionally. So they did that. We went in with staff last fall and said, "Mr. Seeger's wants to add on to his office. Can we get a permit?" "Sure, let us work on some things," and then two and two didn't make four. We started looking, and Mr. Burry got involved, and when we took the legal descriptions from the 1962 and 1970 zonings and laid them on top of the two properties, they weren't even close. Mr. Seeger's office was worse. About 20% of his building was within the zoned property. The most of the commercial zone tract sat right in the middle of Haystack Lane and affected three or four of Mr. Seeger's residential lots. You people fixed that for us earlier this summer, and we appreciate it. This whole effort is nothing but a cleanup mission. They did better on this little commercial tract that's been zoned since 1962. Only about 12, 14% of the building didn't fit on the property. So what we did is try and fix that one as well. We have drawn with staff's support and assistance the minimum variances we can do to make this work and the minimum impact on this property to make it go like it ought to go. So that's how we got there. We have looked at the staff conditions that Mr. Wilson recommends, and they make this work. We have one correction we would ask you to make, and it has to do with our letter of agreement with the homeowners. Planning Commission meeting, nearly three hours, a couple of the people in the subdivision next door were concerned and didn't understand it. So Mr. Seeger's and I met with them on the property since Planning Commission, walked out in the backyard of this property, stood in what would be the parking area, and said, "Tell us what we can do for you." And we all discussed what should happen, what should go on, and what we arrived at was this number three in my letter about the, should the use of the property change, that we'll design a combination of items to screen that parking and we'll present it to the neighbors before we present it to the city. I would kindly ask that in your condition recommended by staff, 3F, that we strike the words, "four rows of five-foot-tall evergreens," and then at the end of that, you incorporate all of this paragraph number three of my letter. I have represented and promised to those involved homeowners that we would agree with them and we would make it part of the conditions on this zoning. So I ask you to please support me in that and not make me out of storyteller. In a nutshell, that's all we've done. We came in trying to expand Mr. Seeger's office, we wound up rezoning two properties just because of accidents that were created long before I was authorized to practice law. So Mr. Seeger's in good spirit has gone through this process with the city, asked your final approval tonight, and he is one of the most affected neighbors. His home is in the back of this property and his back deck and pool look straight in the back door of it. So he is as affected as anybody. We would also suggest to you that we are more than happy with whatever minimum parking standard you decide to assign to us. If you decide that four per thousand is proper and that a 10% administrative variance is proper on top of that and the city attorney is in support of that, we have no objection to it. Our goal is to never have to build any parking there. If our tenant keeps living and keeps paying rent, we want to leave it just like it is, which doesn't bother anyone. Other than that, we would ask that you approve staff conditions. We need some approved uses of this property. The staff does such a good job of taking away, I haven't sat down and asked myself yet, what have we got left? I know the sign companies there and they can be there, but that is why we ask that you approve it on staff conditions, deleting those few words and adding our homeowner's concerns that was in paragraph three of my letter. In a simple nutshell, all we're trying to do is fix what was broken. We don't have any new thoughts or creative ideas. We want it to conform as best it can with the remainder of Providence Road and be a benefit to the Hayfield subdivision, which we've been blessed with the sale of two lots since this process started. One of the two homes is now under construction. That home will be valued in excess of $1.2 million. We expect the second home to commence construction before October 1st, and we have serious interest in the third lot. We don't know why we've suddenly gotten lucky, but we're deeply appreciative. Mr. Seeger's, who owns the subdivision as well, is not going to do anything to mess up the lot sales. He and his bank are seriously interested in getting this property moved. If you have any questions of either Mr. Burry or I, please let us answer them. Any comments we can address, we're happy to. Other than that, we would close our presentation and reserve time for a vote.
Okay. Is there, do we have any other public comment in favor of this application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have anybody that, public comment is speaking against this application?
Yes, sir, we do not.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and kind of open it, I'll open it up to counsel discussion and any questions to the app center staff. Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Rollator. You mentioned inserting number three from the letter that was presented to us tonight. What about the additional conditions of restaurants, gas stations, and convenience centers?
I think they're already in the conditions that Tom has proposed.
They are.
I have no objection to you doing everything in our letter.
It's a big paragraph. All right, so they're already in there.
And he added a few.
Yeah, there are a few here.
A few snuck in there.
All right, very good.
Joe?
And while you're up there, just want to understand, you promised the citizens that you spoke to that you would get the conditions of item three added to the variance or, or the, what we're going to approve today. So, so regardless of the fact that they were in or they were out, you guys would be free to make good on your word. You, you promised them that you would make this part of the deal, is that correct?
That's correct. They understood this was far better than a berm, and they understood it was better than five rows or four rows of trees.
Okay.
Once we stood out there on the ground and looked at their houses and this property, everybody got it.
Okay. Thanks. Brooke?
And with that being said, with that added, three added in from the Rollator letter, that makes you the enforcer?
It does.
Okay.
But I'm perfectly okay with that.
Okay.
And I'm perfectly okay with the elimination of the four rows of trees, probably tall.
Okay.
Bill?
So.
Page 26 of 31, you have the recommended conditions. Three, four pages from the back of the staff's report, you have recommended conditions, RC 1114 VC 1103. Are there any differences in those two? RZ 1114, BC Unit 1103. Are there any differences in those two documents?
I think what you refer to is just the structure which is put together. The first ones are part of the actual staff report, and then the ones that you see later, if you see they follow in ordinance...
Right.
They would be the actual of the ordinance. So, you're just seeing the same thing. One's part of the staff report, one's part of the ordinance.
The ordinance will change with that amendment we just made, the condition F, if you approve this, with the recommended conditions.
Okay. Well, I tried to compare them verbatim, and I got lost.
And 1A.
I mean, did you discover, discover the season?
No, I did not.
Okay, okay.
I got past the first paragraph.
Karen, if you'd like.
Just for clarification, based on what we've discussed here now, we would delete your recommended condition three F and in its place add their...
No.
Just, just so...
We'd just add to three F.
And then just, then just add their agreement as an additional condition to the zoning.
We would, on my condition F, we would strike in the second line, "four rows of five-feet-tall evergreens," and we would add at the end of that paragraph, F, paragraph three from Mr. Rolader's letter. And I think that covers it on all sides.
But do we go ahead and add his letter to be a recommended condition of it, or just that one paragraph?
Just that one paragraph.
Yeah, wouldn't we just strike "four rows of five-foot-tall evergreens" and, and then add after H, item three? I mean, those two aren't connected in any way, are they?
Well, they're all buffering, but I mean, we could do that either way.
Either way, you're the intent there.
Number any way you choose or both.
Okay.
Given that, I'd like to propose a motion.
I'm sorry, I still have a question.
Go ahead with your question.
Yeah, just in terms of parking, I continue to be concerned about parking. We've heard from citizens, and we also hear from the applicant, that they're willing to consider reduced parking on the property. Obviously, the conditions help to capture the spirit of the intent. Without, at least addressing those, the reduced parking, it does leave in place the concerns that the citizens had, which is, we've now recalculated it to be maybe twelve parking spaces that would be quote-unquote "required," but we haven't done anything to capture that. And I would like there to still be a consideration for adding a variance, because there seems to be an understanding that the parking is really one of the big concerns. And I think the reality is that without knowing what that eventual use would be, we could end up, as a community, including the citizens, with more parking than what's intended, because obviously, we all know that the properties can change hands. So, I would like to offer up as a consideration that we would defer by one period simply so that we could add the variance of reduced parking to be considered, which would meet the needs of both the applicant as well as addressing the public's concerns, as had been noted at the prior meetings, and it would still accomplish what was being discussed today. And so, as a part of that, Tom, my question, is there anything from a timing perspective? It's my understanding there's no construction underway, there's nothing that, there would be no negative to having, say, a thirty-day deferral just until our next meeting, other than allowing for advertisement of such a variance? Would that be correct?
Being that negative to me, or to...
It just would allow us to capture that.
I don't know about Mr. Seegers or...
But I mean, there's no construction, there's nothing, and there's nothing pending currently.
Yeah, he just told us, they just assume not to build any parking spaces.
Right, and so by having a variance to allow for that, we would make that a formal part of the record if we deferred, added a variance that would allow for that reduction of parking. And so, that would be a motion I'd like to put forward, would be a consideration of that.
Counselmember Los was, had a motion first, and then, before your question, and then if that, if you agree with that motion, that's fine. If not, well...
I propose to put forth a motion for zoning variance RZ 11-14 slash BC 11-0314375, Providence Road by Seegers and Snyder LLC from C1 Community Business and AG1 Agricultural, and I have a question here, to C1, is it community business or community development?
Oh, it's C1, um, community business.
Okay, then one part of the presentation, it calls out going to community development.
Yes, I know.
Okay. To C1 Community Business and AG1 Agricultural for an existing building for a total of 3,085 square feet and a three-part concurrent variance to reduce the fifty-foot buffer and ten-foot improvement setback along the west, north, and east property lines to zero feet, zero feet and twenty feet respectively, with the modification of variance three F wherein we strike in the second line, "four rows of five-foot-tall evergreens," and, and then to insert paragraph three from Mr. Rolader's letter. That is my motion.
Counselmember Los, just for purposes of clarification, you said variance three F and then conditions three F.
Correct.
I'll second the motion.
Are we clear on that?
Yes.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Los, second by Councilmember Tor. Now, I'll open it up to any discussion from the council.
So, Joe? Yeah, Ken, so what's the easiest way, Tom, what's the easiest way for us to incorporate some kind of deferral of the parking lot situation? Because I think it's, I think, or I'm getting the feeling everybody's in agreement that we don't want to make anybody build a parking lot that's not needed, but at the same time, we want to make sure that, you know, the use is proper, and so if a parking lot becomes needed, it should be built. So, how do we handle that?
There's actually a condition, condition three G, to develop the parking lot as depicted on the revised site plan submitted on June 20, upon any change of use within the building if necessary. Is that where you're going with that?
Yeah, so that doesn't require a variance, that just ends up being the way we handle it? Because...
I think it's because of performance danger that's handled at the administrative level, and so if it properly remains as is, I'm assuming the plant, the community development's not going to make them do anything until such time as they see.
Okay, I was just making sure, because if we're...
I want Tom to check me on that, but that's for the applicant's...
No, that's, that's the way I feel about it.
Okay, so that's, Julie, does that answer your question?
Well, I guess there's two things, is that one, under the current use, because it is, if it's rezoned to C1, are you suggesting that we don't have to enforce the required parking?
I'm simply saying with this condition three G, we don't have to enforce, we don't have to build a required parking now, only when it's needed.
Okay, and then separately, what this doesn't yet contemplate is the reduced parking, which is why I was suggesting a deferral to capture everything that we talked about here tonight, but also to capture the intent of less required parking. And I do believe that that's something that we've heard from citizens. I think citizens are hopeful that we will address that, and we can address all of these things. I've heard from our staff that we don't, there's nothing pressing that would require a complete approval tonight. If we instead simply had a deferral for thirty days, and that would be, what would be our next date?
It would be before you, the third Monday in September, which is...
As we have accounted for. Okay, so if we were to defer to a date specific, it would allow us to simply add a variance, and we could make that part of a deferral, that would suggest that we would do everything we just did in addition to allowing for the advertisement of a variance that would allow for reduced parking, and then we could pick that number. I mean, it could be six or eight, but it could be something less than the required thirteen. And it's those required thirteen, when you look at the plat that's before us, and as Councilmember Thurman pointed out initially, it's those additional parking spaces that then require trees to be taken out, and that's what starts to add the intensity and negative potential to those residences. And if you would, Tom, could you just reaffirm that the comprehensive land use plan, both currently and in the future, does deem this area to be primarily AG1 and residential?
The future land use map's clear about this particular parcel, it suggests the agricultural and the future.
Right, and so I will just say for the record that that's why I think it's important for us to take that next step of deferring and then making clear what we would expect for parking, so that we could allow for the adjustment on this parcel because of the history, but also contemplating that we don't know what that next intent or what that next change used would be. So, I would support a deferral with the intent being to advertise for an additional variance for reduced parking.
Okay, let me, let me... You say deferral, you mean defer this whole thing?
Because you can't, that's the only way you could do it.
Let me clarify something, too.
So, yes, I mean, to defer for thirty days.
Right now, we're calling for one parking space per five thousand square feet. It's how we're meeting.
Sixteen.
But in all reality, if this applicant comes back with a use, they can staff in, and they can reduce it down to four per thousand, correct, or less if the use, so not necessarily making them put in sixteen spaces. And it's to their benefit not to put in as much parking space, because it costs them more to put it in, also take trees down and have to recompens trees. So, to Councilmember Bailey's point, just because we approve it tonight, doesn't mean that it has to have all that parking. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I'd like to ask, Mr. Rolader and Mr. Burke, just a quick question, you don't have to get up, just, are you guys, do you guys do these meetings complimentary, or do you charge your clients to come back? So, okay, all right.
All right.
Mayor, if you will.
Karen?
Actually, one, one other thing is, I think with this other condition that we have added, they're going to have to do a landscape plan if they change it anyway, and it could all be addressed at that time, correct, including any variances that would allow them to have less parking than they are currently required?
Any variance that require them to have less parking than currently required or beyond what administrative variance would be a variance if it goes more zoning appeal.
And it could be done, though, at the time a landscape plan is done, if the use changes.
If the use changes, it could be done, and it could be done anytime.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, a landscape plan has to be done if the use changes, so, or if they put in parking, so.
All of that would be part of a land development permit or a land disturbance permit, and a landscape plan would be part of that.
Okay. All right, Julie, one more question, and we got a motion, second.
Yeah, I think the point that I want to clarify is that it's one thing to have an intent from the current landowner. The reality is that properties can change hands, and what I think that we are embodied to do is to make a decision, not just based on what someone's intent would be, but also to protect that parcel for some future use that could also take place under a different property owner. And so, the reason that I bring up the concern about parking, I think we've heard that, but to not address that as a required variance puts in motion the potential risk of an unintended end use. Let's just say that the current property owner sells that property. If it's zoned tonight without a variance for reduced parking, it would allow that next user, who's not before us this evening, for whom we don't know what their use would be, to go ahead and allow for up to sixteen parking spaces. Is that correct, Mr. Wilson? Is that if it were zoned, it's not just what the intent of this current landowner is, but what the law would allow would be for somebody to go in and put in up to sixteen parking spots?
Well, in all honesty, there is no maximum parking. So, a person who comes in subsequent to Mr. Seegers, if he felt he needed twenty-five parking places, there would be no reason to stop him. There'd be no regulation that could stop him, because we don't have a maximum parking number, only a minimal parking number.
But, I'm sorry, if I can just make sure I'm being clear. But if one of these uses, which would be an allowed use, required, whether it's five per thousand or four per thousand, somewhere between thirteen and sixteen, if that use were to change, if it was, as an example, a different end user or somebody's perspective changes, is that it would require, with the change of use, that thirteen to sixteen parking spots?
The thirteen to sixteen number is a requirement. It's a requirement in the zoning law.
And that's my point, and that's why I was asking for consideration of a deferral, Joe, specifically just for thirty days, to allow for a variance to be advertised that would allow us to acknowledge legally as part of this document, reduced parking requirements, so that no end user, whether it be the current user or some future user, if that property were to change hands, that it wouldn't require the thirteen, but that we could set that at a reduced minimum, which would further protect the residents.
All right.
And I just want to make sure I'm at least being clear in terms of my intent. It's not to delay, it's to capture an intended variance that would allow for reduced parking, make it part of an official condition, so that we meet the intent of a landowner, we also protect the adjacent property owners. And you look like you have a quizzical look. Am I not being...
No, no, you're being real clear, but it doesn't sound to me like you're trying to do anything other than limit the number of spaces that can go in at a future date for changes that we don't understand. And I think we've done a good job of capturing what needed to be done based on the changes that we made, and certainly in the letter that was, that was provided by the applicant's attorney, so...
And I guess the concern I have is that what it doesn't capture is a limitation of parking.
Yeah, I understand. All right, at this point, we've got a motion, second. If this motion passes, or if it doesn't, then anyone certainly welcome to make a motion to deferral.
And just for the record, I'll just say that I think what it doesn't capture is the need to reduce parking to protect citizens in this residential area.
Okay. If any other comments on this discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's six to one. Okay, will City Clerk please call our next item, 79.
Next item is CM 11-02, 170 Cox Road, five walls, seven centers, to modify the following conditions of U8664. Condition one is follows: two recreational soccer fields, six mini soccer fields, a 1950 square foot clubhouse, 2,000 square foot storage building, including restroom facilities. To modify condition 2A, to modify the site plan submitted to the Community Development Department on July 5, 2011. To modify condition 3G as follows: limit the freestanding project identification signage on the entire property to no more than one unlighted double-faced monument sign adjacent to Arnold Mill Road or Cox Road, having no more than thirty-two square feet per face and further not to exceed six feet from finished grade measured from the base of the signed structure. This is Agenda Item Number 11165. First presentation was on August 1, 2011. Mr. Tom Wilson?
Mayor and Council, the Community Development Department's recommendation on this item is for approval, conditional of zoning modification 11-02, and approval conditional, changing conditions 1A, 2A, and 3G as requested. The subject site is currently zoned AG1 Agricultural with a use permit for recreation field pursuant to U86-065, approved by Fulton County Board of Commissioners, of three recreation fields, a 1,950-square-foot clubhouse, and a 2,500-square-foot storage building, including restroom facilities. The approved condition includes exterior illumination on the site not to exceed 1.2-foot tangles on any property line adjacent to a residential use or zoning district, and that the light source cannot be directly visible from adjoining residential properties. According to the applicant's letter of intent, the existing clubhouse and storage building will be preserved and renovated, as well as two soccer fields with natural turf. The applicant is proposing to develop six mini soccer fields that have semi-permanent half-walls around each mini field. These can be removed for required maintenance of the proposed artificial turf. The site plan indicates of the subject site a total of ninety-six parking places that are currently developed on gravel parking lot. The applicant has received a letter of permission for the Porter School, which is located to the west within the city of Roswell, to utilize their parking lot during the evenings and weekends through an existing driveway that adjoins the subject site. This provides an additional forty-six parking spaces for a total of 102 spaces to be utilized by the site. The city of Milton zoning ordinance requires 50 parking places per field. The six mini fields are located within an area of a regular soccer field. We consider that a single field, for a total of 150 parking places. As I said, there are ninety-nine parking places built on the property, I'm sorry, ninety-six built on the property, and forty-six at the Porter School next door for a total of 145. That is five less than the 150 that I calculated before.
142. It's 142.
142. That is eight less than the 150 that I calculated at fifty per field. But the applicant can also request an administrative variance to reduce that by But the applicant can also request an administrative variance to reduce that by fifteen parking places. It gives them more than the minimum necessary for operating that. I would like for the applicant to speak more about the parking requirements for that field as he divided the one building into six and why that doesn't generate more parking, but I think he'll have an opportunity to do that in just a moment. Let's take each condition one at a time. Condition 1A, the existing condition 1A is for three recreation fields, nineteen-hundred-and-fifty square foot clubhouse, two thousand square foot storage building with restroom facilities. The proposed condition is for two recreational soccer fields and six mini fields, plus the same nineteen-fifty square foot clubhouse and two thousand square foot storage building. The purpose of this modification is to change the type of field that was developed on the site. The applicant stated that regarding the operation of the fields, there will be no more players utilizing the field with the six mini fields than a single soccer field. Staff supports the change in number and types of soccer fields for the subject site. Based on the existing zoning records, there have been no additional requests for renewals. I'm sorry, I should have said this earlier. Condition 1A as it exists right now allows for this facility to come back in and seek a new use permit after ten years. It doesn't require it, it just allows for it, which is a little weird. Researching the zoning documents over the past, there has never been a second request all the way back since, what did I say, 1986. So it's permissive, not prescriptive, to come back and ask for that second thing. I recommend that we just eliminate that part of the condition altogether, since it's not required for this type of a use permit. Existing condition number 2A is just the site plan condition that you all committed with. He is proposing, the applicant proposes to modify the site plan with the revised site plan in Exhibit A. Exhibit A refers to the aerial photography submitted in as part of your package, the site plan you also have in your package. The site plan indicates compliance with the existing conditions and zoning ordinance where applicable, with the exception to request for an administrative variance for the parking reduction. Additionally, the proposed use is consistent with the original request for the special use permit for recreational soccer fields. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of condition 2A for the revised site plan submitted on July 5, 2011, and Exhibit A referencing the aerial photography. The last condition that is, he seeks to modify is condition 3G. Condition 3G, as it is written today, limits the freestanding project identification signage on the entire property to no more than one unlighted double-faced monument sign adjacent to Arnold Mill Road or Cox Road, having no more than twenty square feet of surface area per face, and further not to exceed four feet in height from finished grade. That is more restricted than current Birmingham overlay district standards. It's restricted in that this property has two frontages, would normally be allowed two signs, it is restricted to a single sign. The maximum height in the Birmingham overlay district right now is six feet from finished grade.
Birmingham or Northwest full?
I'm sorry, I'm saying Birmingham or not, I meant Northwest full. Six feet from grade and thirty-two square feet. The applicant is asking that he just simply be allowed to have that minimum size that is allowed in the Northwest Fulton overlay district. He is not asking for the second sign, for the second frontage, just to allow the single, the one single sign to be the size and height that is allowed in the Northwest overlay district.
And to clarify that, he could ask for two, since he's got frontage.
Well, he can ask for them, but.
But he's only asked for one.
But he isn't, he isn't asking for the second.
Could you just confirm, I think I heard you say thirty-two feet, but then I thought I heard you say twenty feet, and it may just have been that you just were.
It's twenty, I think.
It's currently restricted to twenty feet and four feet high. The request is for thirty-two feet and six feet high, which is consistent with the Northwest full overlay district.
Right, so currently the assignment's in place is twenty feet. The current use permit requires four feet and no greater than twenty feet total.
That is correct.
I just wanted to confirm what I heard you say.
Having said all of that, staff recommends approval of this modification, all three parts.
Okay. Any questions for Tom before we let the applicant speak?
Mayor, I've got one.
Karen?
Presentation. Now, this is a zoning modification, not a rezoning, so it did not go before the planning commission, it comes directly to us, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, anybody else? All right, if we can hear from those in support of this application.
Mr. John Conway.
My name is John Conway, I'm the owner of Wall-to-Wall Soccer Centers. My address is 1052 Dogwood Forest Drive, Marietta, Georgia 30068. Our plan for 170 Cox Road is to upgrade an existing well-used and well-loved facility that is in need of some re-energizing. There's been a soccer facility here for its whole existence. What we are proposing is to provide some upgrades to the existing use. There is a full-size grass soccer field which will remain intact, and a smaller grass field, it says, three large recreational fields, it's actually one and a half or two and a half as we speak. So the first grass field is significantly smaller, about half the size of a full-size field. And our request for permission is to install six artificial turf, small-sided game fields on the middle field of the property, to attract youth leagues, adult leagues, some coaching opportunities, to really make this a facility that provides opportunities for athletic participation for citizens of Milton and beyond. It is a facility that we've found has a great formness in the community, people have great memories of this facility. In recent years, I think it's become a little bit neglected. So our plan is to breathe a bit of life and a bit of energy and upgrade it to its current and future use. With regard to the parking question, the current use or recent use has been the YMCA, which has used the facility primarily for its youth soccer facilities and youth soccer programs. As we spoke to the planning staff, use of soccer fields changed from midweek to weekend. A weekend use is a game use, so you'll have two games, so two teams on a single field. Practice use is different, it can be as many as four teams can split a team, split a field into four, and use it for practice use. So our proposal is to have no more parking demand and no more users per hour than is currently in place. My summary in there explains how that works. The use patterns will change, we will have more adult use than is currently in play, so the later session will become a busier session than the traditional after-school session that the YMCA might use. But based on its current use pattern of a typical youth soccer program, with Field One being a smaller field, two teams of fourteen players, Field Two, four teams of sixteen players, et cetera, et cetera, we estimate about one hundred and thirty-four players or users per hour in that early evening session, and as many as one hundred and forty in that later session. What we propose, because our primary evening users will be adults, the five to six-thirty slot is less appealing because of traffic and work and those kinds of things, so we anticipate no more than one hundred and eight users in the early session, and no more than one hundred and forty users per hour in the later seven to nine-thirty session. We have one hundred and forty-two parking spaces at our disposal at the facility between onsite and our neighbors and Porter School. So we are very excited about the opportunities to bring some fields and some athletic facilities for use. I think we've been very open in our discussions with our partners and the city and the one who say about shared use. So very excited for the opportunity to speak to this evening, I'll be happy to answer any questions as needed.
Okay. At this point, before we ask any questions, we'll open, is there any public comment, any more public comment on this?
No, sir, there is none.
Okay, so then I'll close the public hearing, and then now, John, I'll be glad to open it up to the council if anybody has any questions. I want to start out just by saying thank you to you and your partners for, as you say, breathing some life. I know in Milton here, we're, that's a big concern for everybody, is more park space, and we want to continue expanding our parks programs and whatnot, but we definitely need lots of rectangle fields, so I just want to throw that out. Thank you for that opportunity, because I'm sure a lot of Milton citizens will get some value out of this. I'll open it up. Julie?
Thank you, Juan, thank you for your presentation, very appreciated. Just very quickly, in terms of the Porter School and that agreement, I'm pretty familiar with the property, but just for the record, can you just confirm the accessibility from one to the other, just from a public safety standpoint, knowing that young people are involved? I believe that there is accessibility, that it's easy to get from one to the other, but if you could just speak to that quickly.
Yeah, there is currently a, I think you can even see it on the site plan here. There is a cut-through driveway between the Porter School and the facility where vehicles can travel.
So that would continue to be open, I'm assuming, in this arrangement?
Yes, and the gate can open and close, so we would close it during the day, so kids don't wander into places they don't need to, but we would open it in the evening. Our overfloor parking would be when the school is not in session, but it's a well-defined passageway between.
Thank you. And this is my second question, is with regards to the ten percent administrative request. I'll just, I don't want to make any assumptions, would you just state whether or not your intention is to pursue that ten percent reduction administratively? That's an administrative ten percent reduction.
I think that's basically, the staff is allowed up to ten percent administratively.
Right, I just, because I assume that right now you haven't pursued it yet because you're here tonight.
Yes.
But that the intent was to, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think you can tell, as a lot of people, we all, you know, the less parking is better. It used to be, I mean, this guy just wanted more, but less parking is obviously better for the environment.
More space for soccer.
Yeah. Karen, do it.
The other question I had is, I'm assuming that the Porter School obviously does not object, and people in the cemetery are not going to object, but the neighbors behind there, have you heard anything at all from them?
We've spoken to them, they're, you know, they're, been longtime neighbors of soccer fields, and I think they are appreciative that it isn't a dramatic change in use. There is a, I think they've grown to appreciate what could be next door, and fields and people playing sport, I think is quite a fulfillment. All of our neighbors that we've spoken to are delighted, there's a little bit of an upgrade taking place, and it isn't a huge big building doing the same.
Bill?
I just want to commend you for doing this, you know what the need is out here, and I look forward to playing on these.
Good, we're fine with this.
Julie?
I look forward to seeing them.
Yes.
I'd hate to see that, too.
I was just going to ask the mayor if I could put forward a motion.
Sure, can.
I'd like to put forward a motion to approve ZM 11-02 at 170 Cox Road by Wall-to-Wall Soccer Centers to modify the following conditions of U-86-64. Can I just say that as presented, or would you like me to read it into the record?
You can say as presented.
As presented this evening, as reflected in our agenda, as well as the packet attached heretofore.
With conditions?
With the conditions for forward by staff.
I'll second that.
All right, I think, got a motion by Councilmember Bailey, a second by Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? And I apologize, Councilmember Thurman, I think, I got his second in my ear first.
I want to make sure we have the recommended conditions in there.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Again, thank you very much, and good luck.
Go ahead and forward, Councilperson Lusk, one of those applications.
Yeah, go ahead, let's get him signed up.
You have a geriatric need.
All right, well, City Clerk, please say on the next item.
Next item is ZR 1115, text amendment to amend Chapter 64, Article 7, Division 5, State Route 9 overlay district as it pertains to outdoor amenities areas. Agenda item number 11866. First presentation is on August 1, next session on August 8. Mr. Tom Wilson.
Mayor and Council, you recently approved a ministry State Route 9 overlay district at year of April 24, council meeting, with the exception of Section 64-1089 outdoor amenities area. Staff has recommended a text amendment that requires all commercial or mixed-use developments greater than 25,000 gross square feet to provide amenity areas based on their size of development, ranging from five percent to fifteen percent of the gross land area. At the July 26, 2011 Planning Commission meeting, additional edits were made by the Planning Commission to the text amendment to require a flat ten percent of the gross building size of the commercial use over 25,000 square feet to be developed as outdoor amenity areas, of which fifty percent must be contiguous. The attached text amendment is shown with red lines indicating the changes recommended by the Planning Commission. The resulting document requires all commercial or mixed-use developments where commercial use is greater than 25,000 gross square feet shall provide outdoor amenity areas. Developments shall provide a minimum of ten feet, ten, I'm sorry, ten percent of the gross land area devoted to commercial use as outdoor amenity areas, of which fifty percent must be contiguous. Examples of outdoor amenity areas include, but are not limited to, pocket parks, plazas, fountains, public arts, and walking and recreational trails. Amenity areas shall not include parking lot islands or landscape strips, detention, landscape strips, period. Detention ponds and bio swells and similar stormwater management facilities may be included as outdoor amenity areas if approved by the City of Milton Design Review Board. We recommend approval of this, oh yeah, we do recommend approval of this. Mr. Lusk, at the last meeting, you asked questions about had we freed up any land of any of our actions in the City of Milton, specifically as it related to parking. We used to have five per thousand, today we have four per thousand, so each one of the parking places that we eliminated really frees up three hundred square feet of land. We're only asking for one hundred square feet of this back as an amenity area, so we have more than covered that request. You also asked how this was handled in surrounding jurisdictions. I think you've been provided with this document. Alpharetta, Cherokee County, Forsyth County, Roswell, Suwannee, and Woodstock all require some sort of either open space or amenity areas. Alpharetta requires fifteen percent in some cases and ten percent in others. Cherokee County, five percent. Forsyth County, twenty percent. Roswell anywhere from five to thirty percent. Suwannee just requires a functional town center, community park, green space or other focal point, and Woodstock requires a twenty percent open space. So we're kind of in the middle of all of that, and I would like to answer any questions you might have about this.
Thank you for your research, appreciate it.
Yeah, I, in fact, to talk to Tom and also know other council members, Councilmember Lusk concerns, and it does look like we fit right in the middle of surrounding jurisdictions, plus the fact with the parking, we're not, we're not putting, imposing anything on a hardship on a business, but, you know, it's also benefited Milton and our citizens with these, with this, so I think it's a win-win.
Absolutely.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Wilson?
Oh, good.
Julie?
Juan, thank you very much for this analysis. I mean, to me, what it says is that, I don't know, the middle between five and thirty to me may not be ten, but I think it gives us the opportunity to even, beyond tonight, to look at some more creative ways to ensure that we do have more green space, more dedicated open space. I think in particular, the Highway Nine area needs to see more of that, not less, and so my request, and this is obviously not part of a condition, it's just that as we proceed into this livable communities initiative with Alpharetta and with the Atlanta Region Commission, that we use this research to recognize that our neighboring communities are actually requiring more green space. In particular, I think that they've seen the need to retrofit some spaces to make them more green, and I think that we, in that area of green space, need to perhaps maybe do more. And maybe there's some creative ways that we can do that in terms of defining which master planned area, which. master planned area, which sub-areas. So I would just encourage us as a team, as we proceed on the master plan for Highway nine, eventually for one forty, but on Highway nine, as well as that LCI, that we use this data to see what we can do to further enhance Highway nine, because I think we've got some opportunity there that would benefit businesses, as well as that residential area that surrounds it.
Let me ask you, I'm assuming, city, would you have, no public comment?
No, sir.
If that's the case, I'll close the public here, and then we can still discuss this at this point, but-
I'll make a motion.
I'll accept a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve RZ eleven dash fifteen text amendment to amend Chapter sixty-four, Article seven, Division five, State Route nine overlay district, as it pertains to outdoor amenity areas, Agenda item eleven one six six.
Second. All right, got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Lusk. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, let's move on to unfinished business. City Clerk, please call those items.
Next item is approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to fix the AdValeon tax rate of the City of Milton for fiscal year two thousand and eleven and for other purposes. This is Agenda item number eleven one six three, first presentation on August first. Public hearing held tonight, August fifteenth. Ms. Stacy English.
Good evening. I've pretty much already said everything in the public hearing, but just for, just for informational purposes, the tax bill, the taxable property value for the two thousand and eleven Tax Digest is, will be one point nine billion dollars. With that added, multiplied by the four point seven three one mileage rate that is being proposed, you will have a bill out of nine, roughly nine million dollars. Again, that breaks down to eight point three million dollars for real property, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand for personal property, and four hundred and ninety-five thousand for motor vehicles. The bill date will be September first, with an October thirty-first due date.
Okay, any questions for Stacy?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
All right, if you have any questions, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to fix the AdValeon tax rate of the City of Milton for fiscal year two thousand and eleven and other purposes. Agenda item number eleven dash one six three.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Tarr. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any items under new business, so we will move on to reports. Do I have anybody on council that would like to report on anything? Okay, move on to staff reports.
Just a couple of real brief ones tonight, gentlemen in the audience, because today was his first day, so he didn't know he was going to testify on his first day, so-
And I didn't remember his last name, so, so I introduced him as John.
It was John.
You didn't step up.
Well, it had to come through by the time you really asked the question.
You're in a construction, didn't ask me, you don't remember?
No, I always remember.
It just says you're a friendly mayor, ma'am.
So he'll start to get settled in, but today was day one, so I hope it's a very good clue, and we'll see a lot of loving and love in the work that goes into Milton here as we move forward. I'll let you know the community development director's search process is going well, I don't have anything to announce tonight, but I can stay pretty deep in the middle of it, and it is, it is coming well. Paving starts tomorrow, and that's a good, good thing. Cruises will start down here on Web Road, Web Road, from Morris Road to Fireburn Road, which is the first pass that spreads here around the corner. They'll be mobilized here for about a weekend and a half, just to give you an idea of the first phase, but then we'll have to move to ten road, and whatever it takes, it's thirty thousand people there, and there's going to be some gaps between here and there. So if people question what's going on on the roads, there, during this paving process, there will be road roads that will be, can be closed for paving. Traffic may be slowed to some extent in that it has to travel on, along the two lanes that get to those areas, but there will be no road closure until the project starts tomorrow.
Chris, I'm sorry to interrupt, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
In terms of the timing, just knowing that today that Fulton County schools opened up, and that obviously brings with it a different traffic pattern than previously, I'm going to assume that we've fought through these logistics, but just at the risk that we might be able to work with our contractor. In terms of start times, some of those roads obviously are more congested because of schools, can we just speak to the fact briefly as to whether or not we're looking at start times that would be after kind of that rush of buses, et cetera, or what that timeframe is?
You know, to the extent that I can sit here and tell you they're going to start next time, I don't know that.
Okay.
I do know that there was thought put into the fact that this is that, obviously, we want traffic to move as freely as we can in Milton, and at the same time still get the project done.
Of course.
So, you know, we're a little bit earlier in this year, which I think is good compared to last year, because we are definitely in a place that we know the weather is going to hold for us to be able to finish the project, and we're not going to get the dipping temperatures at night.
Right.
Yeah, I said traffic too this morning, and I know that we're yet to be able to accomplish it.
And just, maybe just that conversation with our, with the contractor, just, and this week may be worse than next, as people kind of get back into those routines.
Traffic is, we think.
Correct. Or at least that they would have folks out there to help move traffic along, so that at least that they are there, do proactive, kind of thought through those logistics.
I know my six-year-old still thought that bus was a problem this morning, he alerted you to the bus, so, maybe all of a sudden he's going to have his allergy, it's Monday.
Mine loves it. For some reason, my youngest one loves it, he's one side of the bus. Bill?
We did some paving about a month ago, and we didn't strike at that time. I am to understand that we're going to wait until this contract's complete before we go and strike.
You know, the question I'm going to have to answer is, I think so, because I think that this contract, to the level of my understanding of it, obviously, the carpenter's here, he can speak to the detail of it, is a very similar contract to the contract we had last year. So my thought is that, yes, there's obviously the work that gets done initially, there's some cleanup work that happens, and then striking is the last step, once the shoulders remain, and initially, that it can be struck.
Okay.
Do any of y'all have questions for me, that I can either answer now or take to the staff and bring an answer back to you? In the next week, we can do budget, we jumped into that on Monday. I'm happy to tell you that I will be able to bring you a budget a week from today, if it's balanced, and I know sometimes, thank gosh, that, you know, it's got to be balanced. Well, it does have to be balanced, but that's always the challenging part every year, to get you a-
It's easy to balance it, it's hard to make it all fit in the balance.
Well, that's true, right. But, you know, there's some good discussions that we're going to have this year, I think they're very positive, I think they tell a good story considering the environment that we're living in. So I look forward to starting that dialogue with you, it's going to be kind of a rapid-fire one, obviously because we have a start and a stop that we have to be done by, but we have more time than I think we need to get a good budget, Dr. Gooddon, so there'll be plenty of opportunity for discussion. I appreciate you coming in on your off Monday to start that this month, and I'm most awaiting this.
And I assume you'll be bringing the information to us and kind of presenting it at that meeting, and then we'll have time after that to ask questions, once we have a chance to go through the budget.
Absolutely. We had a fairly lengthy meeting this afternoon at two o'clock with the staff about this budget, and that was something that I told to them today, was that, you know, this is going to be the first time you all have seen the information, so it's more than, it's probably going to be more of a presentation than it is a workshop, but if you look at the budget calendar, there are additional workshop options if we need them, as well as the multitude of times it comes before you in regular council meetings, so, no, I don't expect y'all to be experts on it next Monday night, that we come and present it, and you say, you know, gosh, I think we should do that, or that, or that, or that. But I do hope that we have an opportunity, and I'm going to try to do it in a less formal setting than this, harder to just, with these monitors up. I don't want to be, you know, I want to be able to see y'all, and I want you to be able to see me if we have this discussion, so we'll figure out exactly how that works with public tables, but just get ready to, pour your things up, and bring a calculator if you need one, and that'll be a good discussion.
Okay. We'll conclude this meeting, do I have a motion that we adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, and we adjourn. I mean, I know there's no discussion, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.